All the board of the meetings of Greenwood Common Council on Wednesday, February the 8th. If you would please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. After the pledge, please remain standing will be led in prayer this evening by Reverend David Markola.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's pray. Got them all work on our vision tonight. We need corrective vision, corrective lenses or additional help with our eyes help us tonight do that. So we're a pleasing balance of far sightedness, thinking about things around the world that are so troublesome right now. But also being nearsighted and seeing that which is close to us that needs some attention. Give these counselors and all of our leaders and all of us who are followers, the ability to see what we need to see tonight, to not let any stone go unturned, but also to see the bigger values of not the dollars and cents, but more importantly, the values, the ideas, the integrity we want to stand for. Lord, I bless, ask your blessings upon this meeting and all that are here tonight. Let it be a great meeting and when we walk out of this place, help us to celebrate that which we can see, that which we have seen and that we have been seen tonight in this meeting. Praise your name. I pray in the name of Jesus, each in their own way. Amen.
Thank you. May be seated. Roll call. Present. Here. Here. We do have a corps and would like to officially welcome Ms. Petron to the council. She was elected at a Republican caucus last Thursday to fill Drew Foster's seat for the rest of this term. So thank you. Approval of the minutes. All of you should receive copy of the minutes for our last regular meeting. If there are motion, I saw Mr. Bates second, second Mr. Lexi. Any additions, deletions or corrections? Hearing none, then roll call on the minutes. Minutes are approved with a vote of nine to zero. Reports Corporation Council.
I didn't send a semi monthly report is available on the sharepoint if you wish to see it.
Anything going to control at this time? Any committee or board reports? All right, hearing none. We, on our agenda tonight toward the end is the annual contracts. I believe we have a representative here tonight from the Greenwood Community Band. And they've asked if possible, if we could move them to the front of the agenda. So motion by Ms. Gibson, second by Mr. Bates. Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye. All right, Ms. Petit. Floor is yours.
My name is Ashley Pettit. I am a newly elected board member for the Greater Greenwood Community Band. I'm presenting tonight on behalf of our board president who could be with us just our 2022 annual report. Our 2022 finally got us back into a normal post COVID rehearsal and performance schedule. Strangely enough, we have gained audience during COVID with people ready to learn from that and get back to enjoying music. With the support of South Pleasant Middle School, the Greenwood High School, the Greenwood Parks Department, and the city of Greenwood itself, we have a network of community entities that help ensure that we can keep presenting quality musical arts for the area residents. Randy Breewell, our musical director, has really driven our concerts into events with various themes. And even adding, even adding an MC at some to help with adding flair and to announcing and adding more fun to the program. This added styling of the show should be commented on by audiences as a neat new direction. So we'll continue along with that cap. Our last two indoor concerts, certainly the Halloween and Christmas shows, have really grown, each having themes, incredible decorations from the auditorium and several guest artists from the local community, including some vocalists and dancers. We were able to have four part concerts at the amphitheater as well as another at Carco Park in Indianapolis. After this, we're over week, we always get prepared for our best summer event, our annual concerts in the park event at the end of August. We have music from noon until about 8:00 PM with bands from all around the state coming to perform. The drop for our guest performers will be held as soon as we hear back from our instant letters that we just sent out. We were sure to have a great slate of groups around Indiana against taking it a very fulfilling event. In June, the group was able to represent Greenwood up in South Bend at a con summer event, which is the summer teaching seminar, run by the largest manufacturer of musical instruments in the United States. Also, we have several small ensembles who are able to bring the gold and play live music at the park for the lighted Christmas display again this past season. It's always great to even people wandering through the parks that are probably stranded. We also had a very special activity in 2022 where the majority of the band went to Ireland. In mid-June, it performed four concerts at various venues representing Greenwood very well. It's important to note that none of the band's money was used for this. This was all by participant and musician fundraising and their own expenses. But it does show a lot that over 50 people were able to provide that funding for themselves and we could really kind of reinforce that with the band and the group and we really enjoyed that. We are exploring trips for 2024 that would probably be domestic. That way we could get more participation. Unfortunately, after a year extension on our library space, we are losing it as soon as we can take it through the simple leaky issues. We have about a thousand square foot area that we use to store all of our music and copiers and band supplies. If anyone knows of any businesses or entities that are renting out spaces in the Greenwood area that could help us out, we would be very happy to hear from you. Thanks again to the city, Parks Department, everyone who helps us bring music to the community. We're so very glad that they're able to represent so well. Also, thank you for moving forward and touching down.
Thank you. Any questions for her? Need to put you on the spot. All right, thank you. As most of you know, the city budget has a total of $5,000. It goes to the Greenwood Community Band. 2,500 of that is from the mayor's budget. 2,500 is from the council budget. So we need a motion to approve the contract for the council's portion of $2,500. Motion by Mr. Bates, second by Ms. Gibson. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, then all in favor say aye. All opposed? Passage unanimously. Thank you. This is an opportunity we set aside for members of the audience to address the council concerning items that are on tonight's agenda. So if you are here, would like to do so, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. And as a reminder, there is a five minute time limit per person.
I am Dale Marverduke, 1153 Boon Drive, Greenwood, Indiana. I thank you for the opportunity to speak. I would like to talk against the ordinance 2304, the merit system ex parte communications ordinances that are coming up at point. I take these objections because I'm for all communications and I think that our police officers need and our firefighters need all that. I actually talked to five firefighters at the rule team on the fifth. And I asked them, what do they think of the ex parte communication tool? And I think that before we pass anything, these people should know about it. Only one who knew about it, he would not give an opinion. But I think if we're putting down a new ordinance that affects the people and it hasn't been communicated to them by the city first, by the firefighter, by the mayor's office first, that shouldn't be on our agenda. You need to talk to the actual people involved impartially behind doors. It's rather difficult to say, hey, I don't like my boss. I don't like this rule for my boss. I don't feel comfortable with it. But I think it's something that we need more information on then. I find that well, the ordinance lacks penalties for violation. And we had the attorney last week say, well, it could be anything. He could be fired, nothing. And I think maybe we should put a limit. I had a penalty for this. You're going to pass it. I don't think you should pass it. But you know, communications, ill defined and ex parte with the right people, the wrong people, with people who may not even know anything's going on, I think that we should limit penalty to like a day's vacation pay. If it's on my side anyway, it needs more than, it needs a penalty. It needs a definition of what ex parte is and what type of communication is barred. It needs protection for the police officer to lead to communicate without maybe going through all the channels. It's a suggestion box or a flame box that Paul can use. All transfers of information that's knowledge and a selective ignorance that would be result of not allowing people to speak their mind and be honest, such as the fire department people I talked to didn't even know about this. It's something that's great concern to me. And for those reasons and few others, I think that this ordinance should be delayed for a few months. I think the council before voting on it should listen to impartial, informed people. And I mean informed people who aren't just listening to the administration side of it. But we're maybe presentation by somebody who might be more involved in their direct representation. Education, that's one side, it seems more like brainwash than that. So one thing, I thank you for the opportunity to speak. I hope that you will vote down those ex parte communications until you've actually talked to the people involved personally, anonymously and with what we need for our city. I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council at this time?
Good evening, council members. My name is Marisol Sanchez. I'm here on behalf of Enjerson Council. And I just wanted to say a few words to, first of all, thank you for the opportunity here. I'm speaking on behalf of Resolution number 2304 concerning the tax abatement request that relates to the economically legalization area in the Greenwood area, Upper Bushville Road and 31. I just wanted to express again my, my thanks. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to be here at the first presentation of this project, but we remain very excited and committed to this community, doubling down on this community to bring this, to bring economic development growth and also to expand our presence from Enjerson Council's perspective and the new corporate offices of our partner, George E. Booth, to this community. So I just stand here writing to answer any questions as you get to that portion in your agenda. I believe here's willing to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council at this time, either in person or online? All right, hearing none, then moving on to ordinances and resolutions. Notice of intent to consider ordinance number 2307.
An ordinance to amend the text of ordinance 2029, unified development ordinance, Article 25, Vision 2, to repeal and replace for flood hazard overlay district and make related amendments. Division seven, law three, sponsored by Lexi.
Have a motion. Motion, Mr. Lexi, second. Second, Ms. Gibson. Anybody? Floor is yours.
Thank you very much. We are asking for you to
Sorry, for the record, to state your name.
Gabe Nelson, City Greenwood Planning Director. What you have for you is a repeal and replace of our flood hazard overlay district. The reason for this is we are trying to bring up our model for this to FEMA's and DNR standards. There are minor changes throughout the entire ordinance due to that. It was easiest to repeal and replace it. I have outlined some of the highlights in the staff report. These include the biggest change I would say was the flood plain, flood plain regulation permits right now 0.15 feet within permits development within 0.15 feet of development to the flood. Sorry, to the flood zone. Now that would be zero. So that would be one of the major changes. It also changes how we look at decks and the zeros, treats them now as accessory structures instead of part of the primary structure. And then we also updated a lot of the glossary definitions for the flood plain as well.
Right, any questions? All right, thank you. Any discussion on the council? Right, hearing none, roll call ordinance 2307. Ordinance 2307 passes on a vote of nine to zero. First reading ordinance 2302.
An ordinance amending section 2-78 of chapter two, Article 8 of municipal code 1983 relating to the overtime policy to address work weeks that included a paid holiday or holiday sponsored by Campbell.
Have a motion. Motion by Mr. Lexi, second of Ms. Gibson. Any discussion on the council? Any questions? All right, hearing none, then roll call ordinance 2302, first reading. Ordinance 2302 passes first reading on a vote of nine to zero. Ordinance 2303.
An ordinance amending municipal code 1983, chapter two, Article eight, ensuring benefits established military duty sponsored by Campbell.
Have a motion. So, motion, Mr. Bates, second. Second, Mr. Lexi. Any discussion? Hearing none, then roll call ordinance 2303, first reading. Ordinance 2303 passes first reading nine zero. Ordinance 2304.
An ordinance amending the Greenwood Fire Department merit system to prohibit commissioner ex parte communication concerning display matters sponsored by Hopper.
We have a motion. Motion, Mr. Hopper, then a second. Second, Mr. Lexi. Mr. Saylor.
Thank you. For the record, Joseph Saylor, Assistant City Attorney, and I wanted to address 2304 and 2305 at the same time if that would be a pleasure to council.
Yes, that's fine.
I spoke about this a bit at our last meeting and I just wanted to hit a couple of points. I don't want to belabor anything. But I wanted to respond to a few of Mr. Marverduke's concerns. First is that by law you can't specify a penalty for a police officer or a fireman in your ordinance. You can, that is left solely to the merit board in any specific discipline case. So in, to the extent that he would like to have such a limit, that can't be done as a matter of law. The merit board exists for the purpose of determining what discipline, if any, is appropriate under specific circumstances. So that is why it is written as that they may be disciplined throughout whatever the disciplinary process is. Another thing I wanted to touch on is that this does not apply to any member of services' ability to lobby their merit commissioners for any policy, procedure, or legislative. That, that's been made completely clear by the Indiana Supreme Court. Ex parte communications are impermissible in adjudicatory settings. They are widely accepted and even expected in legislative settings. So this, this ordinance does nothing to limit any member of service from making any suggestion, any recommendation about any policy, any procedure, any, any matter like that to the merit board. All it prevents is ex parte communications within adjudicatory proceedings. Specifically, you can't go to the person that's supposed to be the fact finder, can't go to the judge, and you can't ask them to consider evidence outside of what is presented. That's not new. It's already illegal. As I just said, ex parte communications are impermissible in adjudicatory settings. And this is really, really, really important. And I say this as someone that did 14 years at prosecutor's office and won by jobs was defending post conviction relief petitions, which is when a convicted person would come back and say, you know what, five years, 10 years, 15 years later, I didn't get the correct process. Specifically, it's usually the judge of the jury considered evidence that wasn't before them or that they shouldn't, that should not have been put before them. And what happens is if the right process wasn't followed, then you end up resurrecting this thing. It comes back. And you have to go back and you do it all over again. And there's a reason that this is already prohibited. It's because, as the statute that Mr. Barrett quoted last, last meeting said, the board is required by law to only consider the evidence that's presented to it at the hearing. And if that doesn't happen, you get this, this, and it's horrible for everyone, the circumstance where you have to go back. It gets resurrected and it comes back. And there's actually a case where this happened from the late 1990s where a police officer was terminated by a merit board. He appealed it to a court. Court said termination was unlawful. The city appealed it to the Court of Appeals years later, who said, well, you know what? It goes back. It goes back and they get a second chance to refire. And it sets up just a terrible situation for everyone. This isn't making something illegal that isn't already illegal. It is just providing notice to everybody, you can't do it. And it provides an additional procedural safeguard. It provides a person who has had their judge hampered with the opportunity to say, hey, I don't want that person to sit on my case. They get to make that motion. That's in the ordinance that they can ask that person to be, to be, to not sit on their case based upon their motion and a vote by the rest of the board. So I, I just wanted to kind of hit those points. This is not something that is, that is targeting anyone or anything like that. It's to give a fair and level playing field. And as I said last time, most of the times where this is messed up, it's often messed up against the member of service. Most of the reported cases are where it's messed up against the member of service where somebody, somebody didn't get to do process that they, that they were entitled to. And as to, as to the ability of, you know, your constituents to speak to you about this, lobby you about this. I would just point out that the city did not ask for this to be some sort of suspension of rules vote at our last meeting. It was introduced with no vote. With public notice, obviously that notice was given to everybody because many people showed up and they've all had the opportunity to, if they wished to, privately speak to any of you or appear and speak publicly. So I would just ask that you take those things into consideration.
All right, thank you. Do you have a question?
Yes.
So that we don't even define what ex parte communication is in the ordinance. That is untrue, correct? I mean, I'm reading it.
That is
Communication includes any communication with commissioner, bipartisan, every party. Or pressing on the act of party without the presence of the adverse party. So that's what, that's what ex parte
Yes, I did my best when I drafted that. I think defining, if you have undefined terms, just asking for trouble down the road. You're asking to get stuff set aside and you're asking to have to redo something. I tried to define those terms as best I could. And I borrowed heavily from the federal rules, federal administrative rules that use a very similar definition.
Any other questions for Mr. Saylor?
Mr. Saylor, I thought I recall that you said that this was really protecting the firemen and the officers.
That is correct. Because most of, most of the cases where this ex parte issue has come up, at least the ones that are litigated, are where generally a police chief, and I'm certainly not saying that that's what happened here, but where a police chief or a mayor or a council person or someone had an axe to grind either against a policeman or a firefighter. And so they went to the various council members or merit commission members and said, hey, gotta get rid of this guy. I want you to get rid of him. He's a bad guy. And this is why, you know, he, he wears purple and yellow and the same outfit. He does this, he does that, he does the other. Bring up a whole bunch of things that aren't a matter of discipline and aren't the evidence that's presented. And then somebody gets railroaded. And, and this functionally creates a new level of protection for both sides. But in particular, if a member of service believes that, that, you know, their, their commissioners have had that type of influence exerted on them, they can ask if they not here to take.
So this is actually protecting the person in question from people talking about it with their non-press.
Correct, correct. It goes both ways.
Thank you.
So one quick question. What was the emphasis for this coming before the council at this particular time of the year?
Well, I think Mr. Barrett spoke to that in particular, that there had been an issue that had come up in a disciplinary proceeding. Well, there was one where it definitely happened down in Franklin that he was involved in that led to the passage of their ordinance back in 2015 and 2016. And there was an issue that I am not privy to the ins and outs of Mr. Barrett had handled where it had come up within the context of Greenwood disciplinary, where at least he, it raised his level of concern.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Saylor.
Thank you.
Any discussion on the council?
This seems like an important ordinance, both of them, important ordinance is for us to, to get in compliance with state and federal law. And I'm more concerned about that than I am concerned about how quickly anybody thinks this was properly for us or who was involved or who wasn't involved.
All right, thank you.
I would just like to say from the public safety officers I've talked to, they don't have a problem with the content of either one of these. I think they just like to communication being open is more just what I've heard. So I don't believe anybody that I've talked to has an issue with what is within the body series. They just would like to have a dialogue.
That's, that's been my experience and, and those that I've communicated with have said, content. In fact, I was just looking at the minutes. The main concern is not legal or ethical matters. Communication between merit employee and their commission and the merit employees who are affected, that's the comments from Mr. Ridge. And so we can argue about the process, but it looks like to me that policy is good policy. So. All right, any other comments or questions? All right, roll call ordinance 2304. All right, ordinance 2304 passes first reading nine zero. Ordinance 2305.
No, or, excuse me, ordinance amending green municipal code 1983, chapter six, Article 12, merit system for the police department to prohibit commissioner ex parte communication concerning discipline matters sponsored by Hopper.
Have a motion. Motion, Mr. Hopper, second. Second, Mr. Lexi. Any discussion? I believe everything we've discussed on the previous one applies to this one. So. All right, hearing none, then roll call ordinance 2305, first reading. Ordinance 2305 passes first reading nine zero. Ordinance 2306.
An ordinance aligning the Greenwood Municipal Code policy on small purchases with Indiana Code 5-22-8-2 and formalizing the Greenwood Board of Small Water Management as a frequency and agency sponsored by Lexi.
Have a motion. Motion, Mr. Lexi, second. Second, Mr. Hopper.
Thank you. Joseph Saylor, Assistant City Attorney. This one was basically kind of a cleanup or housekeeping issue. The purchasing requirements for the city through state law allow small purchases up to $50,000. Basically to be allowed to be done at a market rate rather than having to do requests for quotes or requests for bids. When we passed our policy on that, we did so back in the nineties when the cap was $25,000. In 2007, the state raised that $50,000 in response to inflation, various other things, and our ordinance never followed it. So because our policy was never updated, it still limited such $25,000 instead of $50,000 in state statute. The functional effect of this is just that it makes it harder for us to basically be nimble in our purchasing of essential supplies. This came up in the process of buying salt or liquid salt for the roads. It had started out a couple of years ago under $25,000. Now the amount acquired by the city due to price increases has gone up to over $25,000. And basically it does not remove any of the procedural safeguards like board approval for anything over 10 grand or anything like that. It still has all the same oversight within the city. It just allows the purchasing agents to be a little bit more nimble and not have to do RFPs or RFTs on everything. The second part is just to formally name the stormwater board as purchasing agent. They weren't formally in our ordinance, but we adopted by reference a state statute that said that they were. So they've legally been a purchasing agent. They just were never recognized in the purchasing agent portion of our ordinance. And so this is just a formally recognized And so this is just to formally recognize them as such for that, I have no question.
Alright, any questions? Hearing none, then, uh, roll call ordinance twenty-three oh six first reading.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Hilton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Betron.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-three oh six passes first reading nine zero, resolution. Oh. It's already in first reading.
Her, second reading.
Alright, but there is a request to, uh, suspend the rules through second reading so that they can buy salt. Have a motion by Ms. Gibson to suspend the rules, do I have a second?
Sir.
Second, Mr. Lexi. Any discussion on suspension?
Did I not understand that there's already been that? Did I misunderstand?
I think.
There are already purchases, agency that can't spend fifty thousand dollars.
Maybe if I may, for the record, Joe Sailor, again, um, they basically at this time can't sign a contract for more than twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, and so this would allow them to get, I think the current request was a contract not to exceed forty-five thousand. And this would basically, uh, free up that extra money to buy the additional sold as when it was on.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, any other, uh, questions on suspension? Hearing none, then roll call and suspension of the rules ordinance twenty-three oh six first reading, or second reading.
Lexi.
Aye.
Hilton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Betron.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-three oh six, the rules are suspended through second reading, have a motion on second reading by Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
Uh, by Mr. Bates, any discussion? Hearing none, then roll call ordinance twenty-three oh six second reading.
Hilton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Betron.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill. Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-three oh six passes second reading nine zero, resolution twenty-three oh two.
A resolution adopted Indiana Code five dash twenty-three, public private agreements and taking certain other actions related there to, sponsored by Gibson.
No motion?
Seven.
Motion Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Hoppers. Any discussion on the council? Hearing none, then roll call, resolution twenty-three oh two first reading.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Betron.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Hilton.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-three oh two passes first reading nine zero, resolution twenty-three oh three.
A resolution improving certain amendments to the east side economic development area sponsored by Hopper.
Have a motion.
So.
Motion Mr. Hopper, second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Lexi, any discussion? Hearing none, then roll call first reading, resolution twenty-three oh three.
Bates.
Aye.
Betron.
Aye.
Campbell.
Oh, aye. Well, I will say, I always go after Mr. Bates. This has thrown me off today, so I apologize.
I need to change your last name.
Yeah, I know. I'm old, I'm setting my way.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Hilton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-three oh three passes first reading nine to zero, resolution twenty-three oh four.
A resolution declaring certain area within the city of Greenwood an economic revitalization area, qualifying certain real property improvements for tax abatement and setting the time and place for a public hearing, Enders Howser, Inc., sponsored by Campbell and Hopper.
Have a motion, something, Mr. Bates, second. Second, Ms. Gibson, any discussion? Hearing none, then roll call, resolution twenty-three oh four first reading.
Betron.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Hilton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-three oh four passes first reading nine zero. Second reading, none, new business, introduction, new ordinance is resolutions, resolution number twenty-three oh five.
A resolution improving interlocal agreement between the city of Greenwood and Pleasant Township, Johnson County, regarding fire protection sponsored by Gibson.
Everybody want to talk about this? Alright. Moving on, miscellaneous business, this is the second opportunity that we set aside for members of the public to address the council, this time concerning items that are not on tonight's agenda. If you would like to do so, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, or if you're online, please speak up, and there is a five minute time limit for persons. Anyone? Alright, moving on, um. Council, I, a couple of things that we have before we get to the, well, before we get to conflict event, just, we'll deal with the least one thing. Um, we've been approached, I think I sent all of you an email regarding the, uh, public safety personnel desire for a meet and confer committee. And, uh, I sent you all the information, a couple of things, one, um, we are not required to appoint council members, we can, obviously, but, uh, when we always have, but we're not required to. Uh, number two, there was some discussion last year about, uh, people attending and, and that kind of thing. So if you're willing to serve on this committee, uh, I would hope that you would set aside the time to be there for the meetings. Um, and when I sent you the email, at that time, we only had two council members that had expressed an interest, and that was, uh, Councilman Hill and Williams. And since then, Mr. Pendleton has expressed an interest. I mentioned in that email that I'd spoken with Darren Hoggett, uh, former, uh, fire chief, um, about if, if he would be interested in serving. And he did say he would be willing to do so if we so chose as a council to appoint him. So with that. I would accept nominations for the meet and confer.
Mr. Chairman, I'll start with nominations for Mike Williams.
Alright.
Didn't do them all at one, at one time.
Uh, well, you can do them all, okay.
I know, but as, uh, the two counselors have an interest, certainly know that. You feel, and.
So you, you're nominated to three counselors?
Yes.
Hill, Williams, and Pendleton?
Right. Three seconds on members?
Uh, yes.
My second, there's one.
Alright, we have a motion, Mr. Bates, second by Mr. Lexi. Any discussion? Alright, hearing none, then all in favor say aye.
Aye, all opposed.
Thank you. Gentlemen.
Congratulations.
Alright, uh, we have quite a few conflict of interests tonight, and we need to deal with each one of them individually. We will do them by voice vote, and, um, I hope all of you have at least looked through these, so we will try to move through them rather quickly, so we won't be here till.
Forever.
Alright, uh, we'll start with the first one.
And I apologize. Put your name, Alicia McKenzie, administrative assistant for her spouse, Robert McKenzie, for any interest she has, may have in his earnings as a truck driver labor for the street department.
A motion by Mr. Hopper.
Second.
Second, by Mr. Lexi, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Passage unanimously.
Brandon Bennett, firefighter repair medic, he is the owner of American Pride Renovations, which may be contracted to provide drywall and paint services to the city from time to time.
Motion by Mr. Hoppers, second by Mr. Lexi, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Prove unanimously.
Harold Beck, police department records clerk, for her spouse, Michael Beck, for any interest she may have in his earnings as a reserve officer for the police department.
Second, Mr. Hoppers, second by Mr. Lexi, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Prove unanimously.
Jen Winget, assistant director of park recreation, for her spouse, Matt Winget, for any interest he may have in his earnings as program instructor with Greenwood Park Department.
Motion by Mr. Hoppers, second by Mr. Lexi, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Prove unanimously.
John Loud, Greenwood reserve officer, for his spouse, Molly Loud, for any interest he may have in her earnings, strategic marketing coordinator for the mayor's office.
Second, Mr. Hoppers, second by Mr. Lexi, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Prove unanimously.
Linda Gibson, common council member, owner of custom plaques, which provides preparation, counting plaques, certificates, and certificates, in other words, the city.
Motion by Mr. Hoppers, second by Mr. Lexi, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed.
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Gibson abstains, approved in vote in eight to zero, one decision.
Lisa Edwards, executive administrative assistant, mayor's office, for her spouse, Steve Edwards, for any interest she may have in his earnings at Greenwood Stormwater Department.
Motion, uh, motion by Mr. Hoppers, second by Mr. Lexi, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Prove unanimously.
Lisa Vess, human resource director, for her spouse, Ron Vess, for any interest she may have in his earnings at building services for the public, board of public works and safety.
Motion by Mr. Hoppers, second by Mr. Lexi, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Prove unanimously.
Lisa Vess, human resource director, for her daughter, Kennedy Bertram, for any interest she may have in our, our earnings as part-time city employee.
Motion by Mr. Hoppers, second by Mr. Lexi, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Passage unanimously.
Matt Winget, program instructor, for his spouse, Jane Winget, for any interest he may have in her earnings as assistant director of Parks and Recreation.
Motion by Mr. Hoppers, second by Mr. Lexi, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed.
Melissa Weathers, crime analyst, for, for her spouse, Randall Weathers, for any interest she may have in his earnings as stormwater management supervisor with the stormwater department.
Motion by Mr. Hoppers, second by Mr. Lexi, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Prove unanimously.
Michael Beck, Greenwood reserve officer, for her spouse, Carol Beck, for any interest he may have in her earnings as a records clerk with the police department.
Motion by Mr. Hoppers, second by Mr. Lexi, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Prove unanimously.
Michelle Rumble, code enforcement and mayor's office receptionist, for her spouse, Tracy Rumble, for any interest she may have in his earnings as Greenwood fire marshal with the fire department.
Second, by Mr. Hoppers, second by Mr. Lexi, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Prove unanimously.
Molly Loud, marketing coordinator, for her spouse, John Loud, for any interest she may have in his earnings as a reserve officer with the police department.
Motion by Mr. Hoppers, second by Mr. Lexi, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Prove unanimously.
Randall Weathers, stormwater management supervisor, for her spouse, Melissa Weathers, for any interest he may have in her earnings as crime analyst with the police department.
Motion by Mr. Hoppers, second by Mr. Lexi, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Prove unanimously.
Ron Vess, building services, for his spouse, Lisa Vess, for any interest he may have in her earnings as human resource director for the city.
That's up.
Oh, um, motion by Mr. Hoppers, second by Mr. Lexi, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Prove unanimously.
Ron Vess, building services, for his stepdaughter, Kennedy Bertram, for any interest he may have in her earnings as part-time city employee.
Motion by Mr. Hoppers, second by Mr. Lexi, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Prove unanimously.
Robert McKenzie, truck driver labor with the street department, for his spouse, Lisa McKenzie, for any interest he may have in her earnings as administrative assistant at the sanitation department.
Motion by Mr. Hoppers, second by Mr. Lexi, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Prove unanimously.
Robert Stetcher, firefighter repair medic, is the owner of Good Right Diving LLC, to make the contractor for the purchase purpose, for the purchase of diving-related equipment to provide diving-related training services to the city from time to time.
Motion by Mr. Hoppers, second by Mr. Lexi, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Prove unanimously.
Sonia Mayo, paralegal for her daughter, Charlie Mayo, for any interest she may have in her earnings as a part-time employee.
Motion by Mr. Hoppers, second by Mr. Lexi, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Prove unanimously.
Steve Edwards, stormwater department, for his spouse, Lisa Edwards, for any interest he may have in her earnings, executive administrative assistant for the police department.
Motion by Mr. Hoppers, second by Mr. Lexi, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Thank you. Annual contracts, you've already looked at, uh, community ban, uh, you should have received a copy of the Johnson County Senior Services Contract. Again, uh, the total amount is sixteen thousand, eight thousand of that comes from the mayor's budget and eight thousand of the council budget. I need a motion to approve the contract for the council of eight thousand dollars. Motion by Mr. Bates, second. Second by Mr. Lexi. Uh, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Passage unanimously. The next one is the social, uh, the budget for that is fifty thousand dollars. Um, and twenty-five of that coming through the mayor's budget, twenty-five from the council budget. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Hoppers, second, second by Mr. Bates, any discussion?
I would like to say one thing, our executive director has had some major back issues and awaiting surgery, so that's why they haven't come in yet personally.
Yeah, uh, by the way, I did, uh, they, we usually have them come in, uh, this year, I told them they didn't need to, but they, uh, the community ban and the social both submitted, uh, a lot of information. I hope all of you had a chance to look at it, so. Right, we have a motion, a second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Contract is approved unanimously.